Hello, hello, and welcome back to the Who Are You Podcast. I am one of your hosts Connor Overbay, and obviously you got the wifey on the other side over there, Shannon Overbay.
Good to be back.
That's right. Welcome back from Ohio. Today is episode 168 of the Who Are You Podcast. If you guys are checking this out for the first time, make sure you guys like, subscribe, follow on all of our social media. It's me at Who Are You Pod from everything from Instagram, TikTok, Twitter, Facebook, all the normal spots. And also check out the YouTube channel. It's me, Who Are You? Podcast. You can get all of our video content there. And we're adding some more stuff to the show as time's going on. So make sure you guys keep an eye out for all of that. But today, sitting down with a very, very, very special guest, someone that was recommended to me by one of our past guests, Shad Vic Michelucci. I finally got the name going now. But today, we're sitting down with Mr. Tim Horvath. Welcome to the Who Are You Podcast.
Appreciate you guys having me.
Yes, sir. I appreciate you coming down to hang out with us for the day. Before we get started, if there's anything you want to plug, promote, or any of that good stuff, feel free to let the Who Are You know?
Um, the only thing that comes to mind is the brokerage, Bold City Commercial Real Estate. And I think you add the tags at the bottom. So check us out there.
Yes, sir. But like I said, welcome to the podcast. Obviously, you know, did a deep dive on you whenever I was recommended over to you by Vic. So I was checking out your background. You're a very busy man.
I try to be.
Yeah, I say it's, it sounds like it, you know, whether it be the city council, excuse me, city council member, or, you know, working with, as we were talking about, real estate, or every, all the other boards that you're on, whether it's in the medical field. Obviously, I saw that, what else was it? Your education, you know, you have a very wide range of education from what I saw there.
Yeah, anesthesia provider.
Yeah.
So I got my doctorate in healthcare and practice as an anesthesia provider.
That's amazing. And say, we have a couple of family members currently. One of our, um, my sister-in-law is actually going to CRNA school right now. So she's making her way through. Uh, stepmom is a registered nurse, works at Mayo Clinic, but she's up in the offices now. Uh, my brother's a nurse, so a lot of medical field in our family.
So I'm a nurse and estheticist. I went to, I got my degree from UNF there, actually.
Nice swoop. Yes, sir. And just to kind of let everybody know a little bit about you, right? You're from Jacksonville, correct?
Born and raised.
Yes, sir. And the funny thing is, whenever I tell people that, like about myself, they're like, oh, you stayed. I'm like, yeah. I'm like, yes, I did.
Yeah, Jacksonville's a great place to be. I think we're fortunate to be born here, truthfully.
I agree. And it's amazing to see the growth of the city. That's a big topic about, about Jacksonville on the podcast. It's crazy to see everything going from, you know, what a lot of people thought was a real small town into growing to as big as it is, where we have, you know, our football team here, or even our minor league sports are growing in popularity. It's amazing to see.
I love it. Yeah, we, I mean, we, I'm sure you know this, but we were labeled a supernova city recently. Which is a big accomplishment. I think there's only been five in the, in the country. And it's, uh, it's, I mean, there's, there's an equation for how you get it, but it's not something that's passed out every year. And it's, it really put Jacksonville on the map a couple of years ago.
And what does, what's that mean?
So it's, I mean, I don't, you know, don't quote me. You're gonna put me on the spot here, but it's in a, it's a, essentially, they take median house income versus, uh, the market, the economy, so variability of economy, meaning we're diverse in our economy, higher income combined with lower, uh, cost of living in conjunction with li- quality of life, all those things equate out to supernova.
Interesting.
So I think like Austin, Texas was one. I think, um, I'm trying to think of North Carolina. It was either Charlotte, I forget, and then Nashville.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yeah, so those are two, two of the, two of the five that come to mind off the top of my head.
Well, we just hit over a million people not too long ago as well.
Population wise?
Yeah, just here in Jacksonville.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy to see the growth. And you know, you brought up those other cities like Austin, Texas. That was one of the biggest cities that everybody was talking about for a while there during COVID time. A lot of people were moving there from like California. Same with here in Jacksonville. There was so many northerners or people from California making their way over here during those times where, because we were more wide open than I would say the other states that were at that, at that time. And you know, a lot cheaper to live here compared to those other states.
Yeah, a lot of those things, you know, I don't think it took into account the most boring rating that came out on Jacksonville. You heard about that, right?
What's up?
Jacksonville like last week was rated most boring city in the country.
What?
That's rude.
Yeah, a lot of people have been talking about that right now, which I don't agree with.
I don't agree with either.
There's so much going on here compared to so many other, I am baffled.
I, I forget. You, you can pull it up, but it was, uh, it was some poll that was done. And, uh, that's been generating a lot of conversation in Jacksonville right now.
Really? And that's the funny thing, because I feel like there's always something going on in Jax, whether, you know, like we were talking about the sports scenes, but there's more than just the Jaguars here. Shannon's from a small town in Ohio called Worcester. And, and not, I'm not hating on Worcester.
We beat out Worcester, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
That's surprising.
It's a cute little town, you know what I mean? But like, I feel like there's only 300 people over there compared to here in Jax. And just sitting down with all the people over the years from doing the podcast, there's always some kind of festival going on, or there's like the nine or four popos down at the beach restaurants here. I feel like our, our food here in Jacksonville is so diverse that it's kind of hard to say that we're boring. But like I said, we all disagree with that.
These were not my words.
I did just look it up, and it is saying that it was in overall, um, in 75 of the largest US cities. So it wasn't every US city. It's just one of the largest.
Still not a title I want us holding.
I don't want that. I don't want that either.
Yeah.
But to get into a little bit more of your backstory, right? So what was like, like growing up for you? You know, mom and dad both around, you know, played sports, all that stuff.
Yep, had, had a traditional, good, good family, uh, household, nothing to complain about there. Uh, mom and dad are still together, still live in the same house I grew up in in Mandarin.
Oh, nice.
Yep, yep. So that's good. Um, still do family, uh, every Friday, they still get together for pizza.
There you go.
I try to make it as often as possible, but you know, I live at the beach now. They live in Mandarin. Us beach folk don't cross over the, uh, the intercoastal too often these days.
Far away to travel.
It's far. It, you know, I, my friends that lived at the beach when I lived in Mandarin would always say that. I'm like, what are you talking about? What are you talking about? And then you move over to the beach and I'm like, oh, I get it. If I'm not golf carting there, I don't know if I'm going.
That's Shannon's buy right there.
And my dream is to golf cart everywhere.
Beach or Nokati. I think those are the two communities and, yeah, but the beach is better. Um, so yeah, I grew up playing soccer, you know, um, stayed here my whole life. I was fortunate to travel the world a lot. So I've got to see other cultures and it's really made me appreciate those cultures, but also what we have here in Jacksonville. Only time I moved away was to go to Gainesville and worked there for two years before I came back here to get my, uh, masters and doctorate.
Oh, nice.
Yep.
So what, what were you doing down in Gainesville? Was this in the medical field?
Yeah, okay. So I'm a nurse and estheticist. So in order to practice, in order to go to anesthesia school, you had to practice as a nurse. So when I graduated, um, nursing school in '08 from UNF, I wanted to go straight into ICU because I knew I wanted to go into anesthesia school, which is a requirement. And no one in Jacksonville was hiring new grads into ICU. But Gainesville, um, took me and a couple, at that time, my significant other and a couple of friends went down there to live and work.
Oh, wow. Good for you.
Yeah, it was good. It was a good experience.
And I respect the, the medical field, you know, when it comes to that schooling, I know that's not, you know, just a couple of hours of reading a book. That's hundreds of hours, especially with the anesthesia side of things. You literally have someone's life in your hands.
Thousands of hours, yeah, for anesthesia, yeah.
What made you want to go into that medical field?
You know, it's interesting. When I was going to, um, you know, your first two years in college, you kind of have to decide what you want to do. And no one in my family is in medical. And I am naturally inclined for business. And I was looking at going into business and everyone was doing it. And I was starting to see that those people weren't really getting, they were going to, they were getting this schooling, but not really getting jobs. And I felt, uh, a family friend was like, hey, you should look into nursing. And at first, you know, I was a 18-year-old, uh, you know, uh, male boy at that stage. And medical was never on my purview. Like I said, there was no one in my family that did it. And I, I kind of did some rotations. And as I thought about it, I was like, you know, you get to, you, you get to go into a profession where you get to help others. Uh, the schedule was three 12s, which is what I, you know, I mean, you can have all types of schedules, but the schedule that appealed to me was three 12s. You get a solid, uh, income. And I was like, I can use that money to invest in business and do my own business side of things, to figure out my own business path. I don't necessarily need to go to school for it. And you get to be around a bunch of beautiful women.
That's a good point.
You know, so, yeah, so I went to nursing and then I stumbled into anesthesia. I was like, oh, this is what I want to do. Um, and then, you know, set my track, set my life track up for that.
That's amazing. That was gonna be one of my questions was like, how did you go from, you know, putting all this time, right, into the medical side? And are you still working as a nurse and all that stuff currently or anesthesia?
Yeah, as anesthesia. So, um, once a month, once or twice a month, I'll work at, uh, the beach, uh, hospital, Baptist Beaches, maintain my licensure, maintain my skillset. But it is, you know, it's interesting when I was leaving, because I made the decision to leave full-time about two years ago. And I worked at Orange Park Medical for over a decade. And I was the 20, I was one of the four 24-hour guys. So I would be in the hospital for 24 hours, but only seven days a month. So that was the benefit of it, right? You only had to work full-time seven, seven days a month. And it was a good, I, I really enjoyed Orange Park Medical Center. And, you know, at night, I'd be the only anesthesia provider in-house. You would deal with the traumas, labor and delivery. I mean, you could go from, you know, unfortunately, you know, a bad trauma where the result might not be what you want to bringing in a life in a stat C-section, right? So tho- those, uh, those dynamics were, were very interesting and very eye-opening, gave me a good perspective on life. But that schedule really wears on you. And, um, I started investing in commercial real estate about 10 years, about eight years ago. And as that portfolio grew, it allowed me some more financial stability to pull away from anesthesia, which was really wearing on me. But I still, still love it. And I still, you know, practice once a month.
That's amazing. That's really, that's really cool. Yeah, because I, I hear about it, right? And the medical field, obviously, as I was telling you earlier, we have family in it right now. And I've been kind of hearing like mixed feelings about the medical field currently, you know, and I've seen like posts that you've made in the past as well, where a lot of people are saying it's more for profit now than it is to like help people in certain places. Not saying every hospital, not saying every nurse or doctors like that, but I've been hearing that come up a lot more and more as time has gone on.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, so burnout in the medical community is a real thing. Um, it's a high percentage, over 50%. I mean, there's a lot of studies that throw out numbers between 40 and 70%.
Oh, wow.
I'm actually, I'm actually, um, started writing a book on, uh, medical burnout. And, um, yeah, it's a real thing. And it's unfortunate, right? Because, uh, almost all people that get into the medical community are doing it with, you know, positive intentions. And what's really happened is a lot of these, I mean, it's business, healthcare is a business. Um, and it's just being pushed more to the forefront. And you're seeing, like, for example, I'll, I'll talk anesthesia, right? Um, the groups were traditionally in Jacksonville, um, physician-owned. So a doctor, Orange Park, a doctor started the practice, right? A group of doctors start the practice, they grow it, they hire in, they are subcontracted in by the hospital. That's the traditional model for a lot of things, ER physi- like the groups, insert whatever group name you want, neurology, whatever. And then essentially what happens is big money starts coming in, buying up the groups. And then you become, everyone becomes an employee. And what does big money want? They want money. So then they start kind of, um, they help you navigate your practice, meaning they give you different standards, there's more red tape, like it starts to take away from the patient provider experience. And when you went into that, you know, profession for that part, you know, for that dynamic, and that starts to get stripped and diluted, it starts to, it starts to wear on people. And unfortunately, there is a high, I don't want to say high, there, there, well, there is a high burnout rate, but not everyone has the opportunity to step away or to supplement their income. Um, but you do see good providers leaving the community or leaving that work field, which when you lose good providers, you leave, you, you lose good educators because, you know, in healthcare, you're always teaching the next generation. So when, when you lose that good provider, you're not only losing someone that is going to take care of us, but you're losing someone that is going to train the next person in a good way to take care of us. So it's unfortunate what I've personally seen happen in the medical community.
Yeah. And I know it's, you know, a mixed bag, right? Some people feel differently about that, but a very common thing is what I've heard is what you just said there, you know, and that's the thing. It's, I feel like it's getting more and more like that in every industry, right? You know, every CEO wants to see record highs or a record amount of money made this year. When do we ever get to that point where enough money is enough, right? I don't think that's ever going to be a thing.
Yeah, I don't know that answer.
Exactly.
And to your point about the good providers, like who are educating the next generation, them going out, it's really scary because in the medical field, it is called practicing medicine. You're always learning and doing new things. So without having those educated, you know, people teaching the younger generation rather than just the schooling, it, you know, where is that going to come to?
Yeah, no, I mean, it's a point. And, and to be clear, I'm not trying to scare everyone. There's still a lot of great, you know, there's still a lot of great providers out there, still teach it like that's, it's just a, a minor fraction of the thing, but it was, you know, the lens I saw. And I, I speak on my journey, yeah.
And Shannon, with what she did, she worked in the litigation department. She would tell me stories about insurance companies.
I can't even imagine.
I can't even imagine either. She would tell me these things. I'm like, ugh.
Yeah, I dealt with, you know, obviously, medical records, medical billing, insurance companies in the way, the, the whole dynamic gets just.
Well, when they're getting to you, it's not because they did something right, you know?
Right.
They're getting to you because there was a problem. So definitely skews to perspective there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And to talk a little bit more about the things you're involved in, right? So tell me how the whole city council thing came to be. What, what drove you to go to that? Um, what was the experience like getting voted in, all that good stuff?
Yeah, so I, um, I live in Neptune Beach and I wanted to do my civic duty, get involved. Cause what I really did see, what I noticed when I left healthcare, I felt like something was missing. And I, um, you know, and what I came to realize after talking with my business partner is I was, I lost, or what I had lost when I left the healthcare job was that, um, connection, helping others. And that led me on a journey to get involved on, uh, step one was getting involved on a board, um, Jack's Speech and Hearing, uh, getting more philanthropic involvement. And then also I wanted to do my civic duty for the community that I live in, which I really love. And, you know, one way, one opportunity that was presented to me was to get involved with city council. So I ran. And, you know, I, I know our, people started talking, I started hearing, because I have friends that are on city council and, uh, at Jacksonville, Jack's Beaches, um, I had known some people at Neptune Beach and then Atlantic Beach. And there started being conversation of, hey, if Neptune Beach, because if they don't get their stuff together, they may be absorbed into Jacksonville. And that was, that was just a conversation people were starting to say. And I, I didn't know if there was any significance, because I have no political background at all. And they're like, well, Neptune Beach has a projected $150 million of infrastructure that has to be done in the next two decades, but we don't really make money. So they're like, well, if Jack's Beach doesn't want us, Atlantic Beach doesn't want us, um, Jacksonville would have to by default take us if we couldn't afford these issues that start coming up. And for a Neptune Beach person, that's, you know, Jacksonville's a great city, but it's a different, it, it is, it's interesting, right? Being in Neptune, we're part of Duval. But we're our own city, but we're part of, you know, it's a, it's a weird dynamic, but you get absorbed into Jacksonville, there's a potential for Airbnbs coming in because right now we have a 30-day minimum. You can't, you can't short-term unless it's 30 days or longer.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
We have height restrictions. You can't build over 35 feet for commercial, 28 for residential. So all of a sudden, if Jacksonville took us over technically, those height restrictions. So these are all things I was being told before I got involved. And it was concerning to me and I wanted to be a part of making sure that doesn't happen. So that led, and I was asking people that had knowledge on these topics, and some people were saying, no, that'll never happen, or yes, that could happen. And I've noticed in my life, when, when you're getting mixed answers, that means no one really knows. So it could potentially happen. And obviously, I'm a little more, um, in the weeds now on the reality of that happening, not happening. But that's what led me to want to get involved. And, uh, so yeah, did that answer your question?
Yeah, no, that perfectly did. And.
So you've been on the board, I think, just over six months or so now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Got sworn in, uh, late last year.
What has been like your most exciting part so far? I don't know how exciting city council can be, but.
It's not. It's not. Um, you know, what I do like, um, what I enjoy most is, you know, it's, it's an open invite to talk to any of my neighbor, anyone now, right? And like, so when I'm on the streets and I'm meeting, because I, at the beach, we're a lot more active, we're out, it's a very engaging community. And it's at any conversation when I meet a Neptune Beach person, oh, hey, like, hey, I'm actually a city councillor. Like, it's good to meet you. Tell me something, some, tell me something that frustrates you about the city. Tell me something you love about the city, right? Like, it's giving you this open, open invite to, and, you know, people, when you're a city councillor, people want to talk to you. So it's opened a lot of those doors and conversations. So it's given me a, a, a good perspective into my community. And, um, so that's what I've enjoyed. You know, as far as the city council meetings, it's, so they're every other week pretty much, uh, on a Mondays. And it's, it's nothing like, I go to, so, what's interesting to me is, we have it good, is what I would say.
Yeah.
Uh, and I've gotten perspective because they have these meetups and, uh, for, it's called the Florida League of Cities. And it's a, a political thing for, um, a lot of small cities go there. And they come, they meet up and you get to interact, have exchanging of ideas, blah, blah, blah. And I remember going to my first one and I met these three guys from like, I, I don't want to say the wrong city, but it was like either Palm Coast, Palm City, Palm something. And they're like, yeah, we're all three new, um, our, our city got, they got raped. So before they came on, they came on because their city got raided, it was on the news, on the national news, FBI raids for money laundering. One of their city councillors was running from the cops on a moped, on a cocaine bender. So like, I hear those stories from these people. And then our big issue is like, our senior center needs funding again, or, you know, like, it's, it's comparatively, it's, we have it good. And our citizens, some of our citizens that have been there for, um, generations kind of lose sight of that.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And do you feel like you guys are missing anything down in Neptune Beach or Atlantic Beach? Is there something more maybe the community feels like they're missing that they want to add to that side?
It depends. I mean, asking me, um, yeah, I mean, Neptune Beach, we have some, we're, we're built out, right? Like, we're fully developed, but there is opportunity for redevelopment. And what that looks like is, for example, the old Kmart, um, on Atlantic Boulevard, it's called 500 Atlantic. That was, at one point, it was a big sore spot because they tried to bring in, um, mixed use with like apartments.
Okay.
And the city came out in arms. This is before I was even there. Um, but I still hear the stories. And, um, but yeah, they're gonna, that'll turn into a development. We'll see what comes there. But there's really not much that you can add in Neptune. Truthfully, there's that. And then Shad Khan bought Lemonbar.
That's right. I forgot about that. Yeah.
Eventually, that'll become a nice high-end resort, um, to be deter- determined on which brand he does. But, I mean, yeah, we could always use more stuff. But, I mean, yeah, what we're missing is money. Neptune Beach is missing money.
And how do you guys kind of combat that, right? Is it through just like going out and doing like drives or going out in the community and doing fundraisers, anything like that?
You can't really do fundraisers for 150 million, you know, it's.
Hey, I understand.
Car wash? You gonna come help us do the car wash?
I got you. I'll go out there and help. I'll get sudsed up.
No, you know, that's, it's a great question, right? Because how do you dig yourself out of that hole or stay ahead of the curve? So one thing was recently, you know, I was reviewing with our CFO and I saw that, it was myself and another council member actually, saw that they, they, the city had about $10 million that they were essentially keeping in a low-interest-bearing account, which is like, it was like at 1%. Whereas you can put it in higher interest-bearing accounts at 5%. 5% on $10 million makes a big difference for, for our, for our budget, right? For Jacksonville, it wouldn't make a difference. But for Neptune Beach, it makes a big difference. So starting to go through and provide a business mind oversight to some of these things, being more open to, um, businesses coming in, right? Like, there's a lot of people in Neptune Beach that are a lot of, because Neptune Beach is, uh, it's an older community, that literally these houses have been passed down from generation to generation. So when you have that, one issue is, um, they're homesteaded in. So their property taxes ma- remain low, which is good for them. That's, that's great. I love that for them. We want to keep the community in the, in the feel and the authenticity. But from a, if you're just looking at it from a city financial perspective, that limits the revenue, right? So Neptune is having a lot more residential turnover in regards to houses are being sold, new developments coming in, which is good for the property taxes, um, if you want to look at it from just a strictly revenue.
Yeah.
But, um, so you can encourage that growth, right? Encourage more money to come in through that. And then work with the businesses, right? Like, where I was going with the, the Shad Khan thing is a lot of the people that have been there for generations are very against him coming into the community and doing this big development. But at the same time, you know, we need money. And what people are losing sight of, they don't, you know, if you ask some of these people, they want dirt roads and stop signs again. And that's not the reality, right? Like, what's the saying? There's two things people don't like, change and things the way they are now. So it's like, sometimes you have to make a little bit of sacrifice in order to maintain the city because the, the stopgap is Jacksonville comes in and saves you and you don't want that. So you gotta play ball somewhere. You can't not, you know, you gotta maneuver some of these things.
I feel most residents don't really have their sights on, oh, are, we need to make money for the city. It's, oh, I live here, keep it out.
Yeah, yes. But, you know, and that's where, so I, I look at us, uh, the city council, because there's five of us, the mayor being included on that, as, as a board, right? We are, we are the board. And yes, the residents may have that, but it's our duty as the board to look out for the general populations, right? And whether or not some might agree with that, disagree with that, ideally in the long run, they appreciate it.
And also some people are probably just not aware of this, you know, I mean, they're aware of what they're paying for their stuff, you know, their house, make sure that stuff's maintained rather than, you know, hey, what would help the community side of things. And you know, like, that's the one thing I'm not the biggest fan of that's going on in Jacksonville now is every couple of miles now, you see a new, uh, a new apartment complex going on. And obviously, we have a lot of people that are here. So I understand you got to house them, got to do what you got to do on that side of things. But anywhere you go now, there's a whole miles of trees getting taken out, new apartment complexes, like, for example, Hodges, right? I grew up there. I remember, uh, where that Publix is, uh, right before you get to JTB over there. Over there now, they put up an apartment complex and little condos. And I would say like a couple of months, it's crazy to see how fast and how quick things are changing. And as we're saying, you know, people don't like change. Maybe I'm somewhat like that. But Shannon, obviously, I know you didn't grow up here, but, you know, growing up, Beach and Hodges and Beach Boulevard, there was not Publix there. There was just trees. It used to be, I believe it used to be a two-lane road, if I remember correctly, on, uh, beach, beachside.
Well, I've been here about 10 years. So I've seen where Beach kind of went from all the stuff being on one side and then other side being all trees to both sides being completely full of, you know, residential, whether it be commercial, residential, anything, it's all gone.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I remember when I was a kid and we were driving on JTB to go to the beach and Costco, because I think Costco was like one of the first things built at the town center. Uh, I mean, maybe my memory fails me, but I remember driving over, because it was just trees everywhere on JTB. And I look over and there's a Costco in the middle of it. And I was like, why would they build a Costco there? What are these idiots doing? Like, what do they know? I was like eight, right? And then obviously the town center was coming. They knew that.
Little did we know.
Yeah, yeah. So no, development's crazy.
And obviously, being on city council and seeing all these different things, it has to play a part into your commercial real estate investing and brokerage, right? Your knowledge and all that kind of comes together.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's, you know, it's interesting, like as I, yes, the direct answer to that question is yes. Um, you know, it's, it's good having a diverse background is what I've come to. People have come to point out to me and what I've come to appreciate, right? Like, meaning you have medical, you have real estate, uh, personally investing and helping others invest. And then, you know, small business from the brokerage side, so that entrepreneur side, and now politics. And it's like, it's a melding of the worlds and it gives you a different perspective that some others might not have. And yes, I, I do think that is, I mean, that's also what pushed me to get involved, right? I wanted to make sure we are making the right decisions in our community and based on my experience is how I help.
That's awesome.
I like that. And to get more into the real estate sides of things, right? So a lot of people think, hey, I'm gonna get into real estate. I'm gonna make a bunch of money and all this other stuff. So you making that transition, obviously, you were talking about your medical experience, right? That being kind of a catalyst to save up some money, be able to go, whether it's buy a property or start your business in general. What was like the final kick in the pants to really go out there? And was it you buying the house or was it more starting a brokerage? Like which, what, what came first on the real estate side of things?
To getting started on the real estate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, so I've always kind of known I wanted to do real estate, even, I mean, weirdly, even when I was young. And, um, you know, the banks love W2 income. And when I graduated with anesthesia, they loved that income. And, uh, so as soon as I could, it was a year in, I bought my first house, because I started in residential, I didn't start in commercial. And I ended up stumbling into commercial, um, a couple of years later and realized that that was the way to go. And sold off my residential portfolio and went head into commercial.
Oh, wow.
But yeah, no, it was, it was always, you know, healthcare was, which is a good job and something I'm grateful for, was always also a means to invest in other things, right? It, it gave me that stability to take risks because I, I knew I always had a, an income coming in. So whatever this did, didn't really matter as long as I didn't, you know, as long as you didn't go too crazy.
Of course.
Yeah.
And when it comes to, you know, buying your first property, right? A lot of people, as I was saying, were thinking like, oh, I want to get into real estate, all that kind of good stuff. From your experience. From your experience, right? What, how much money or maybe like, what's kind of like that first step to really getting out there? And you know, like, um, like for me, example, right? You know, we're talking about buying our first home and you know, we're seeing kind of what the prices are and everything. How much did it cost to get your very first, uh, uh, property for that?
Yeah. I mean, well, it depends what you want your very first property to be, right?
Of course.
Like if you're buying a, a residential, I mean, you can get a FHA loan and put 3% down. And you can even qualify for certain things that'll, you might not even have to come out of pocket. So if you're looking for residential, that's a whole different conversation. When you're doing commercial, I mean, commercial is a different beast. And that's kind of what drew me to it because there's a lot more barriers to entry. So it's harder for people to, everyone's doing residential. I didn't want to compete with everyone. And I found something that was a little more complicated, not, it's not rocket science, nothing in real estate is rocket science, let's be clear. But there's a different answer. You'll get it for commercial, you get a different answer for, if you're doing traditional lending, you'll get a different answer from each bank you talk to. And if you're, if you're owner financing, like if you were gonna put, say you started your own HVAC company and you were gonna buy a building, if you, if you're the owner buying the building, you can put less money down and have a better interest rate. If I'm an investor buying that same building, I'm gonna have to put more money down and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna have a higher interest rate because I'm, I'm a bigger risk because I'm not occupying that building. I'm dependent on, um, someone coming in and renting it. I mean, I remember, so one of the best, the first deals my partner and I bought together was across from the hospital, I drove by it every day. It was the old Chamber of Commerce building, literally, literally right across from the hospital. And the building was vacant. It was the old, uh, Chamber of Commerce building and it's about, uh, seven, eight thousand square feet. And it was pre-COVID, cause things have changed since COVID, as far as lending. And I don't, I don't want to bore you guys with financing details of commercial.
I'm interested. This is, that's the point. Yeah.
Yeah. So when we bought the building, we could do it, we put 20% down and it was a vacant building and we, the, the beauty, uh, and so 20% down was back then. Now post-COVID, they won't even lend on office buildings. Banks won't even touch office buildings for investors. If you're, if you're an owner occupant, they will, cause they like businesses, but they don't like investors in the office space. Cause it's a higher risk. They don't want that risk on their balance sheet. So we bought the building, had it filled up in six months and that building was then worth double what we paid for six months ago. Because when you're doing, when you're doing residential, your house is only worth what your neighbor's house is worth. If you have two of the same houses right next to each other, they're worth the same thing. If they're the exact same property. Commercial, if you have one building that's vacant and one building that's filled, based on, you know, income and everything, but it can be double the price. Even if it's, if it's the same building, because you're buying, when you're buying commercial real estate, you're buying a, essentially a small business. And if it's spitting off this amount of income, people are willing to buy that income and pay for it. Simply put, so you could buy a building one day, it'd be worth half a million, put tenants in it the next day, it'll be worth a million dollars.
Wow.
That's crazy.
So do you guys just buy buildings or do you also buy land that will eventually have buildings?
No, um, just buildings. We, 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 um, we've always bought based on, um, generating cash flow quickly, um, especially in our younger, younger days. Holding land is, is a big money game. Like if you look at like what JWB's doing downtown, like that's, that's big dollars. Um, like you have to not only buy it, obviously, and you, most places won't lend on it, so you have to buy it cash. You have to use your money to either build something, develop or re redo something, which takes, I mean, it can take years. So you're sitting around not making any income, you have this millions of dollars potentially out of pocket, not generating any revenue, just to hopefully down the line, make some revenue. We're not, we're not at that level.
Understood.
No, I understand. And have any of your investment properties that you've invested into really like been a bad deal? Something that maybe you were like, dang, this did look good and unfortunately then kind of turned out to what I think it, thought it was gonna be?
Commercial, no, we've been for, we've been very conservative. Um, so we've been good on the commercial. I mean, I have a residential flip right now that I wish I wouldn't have bought and I bought it right. Just the market has changed so much in, in six months on the residential. It's at the beach too. That'll be the first, if it sells at the current price, it'll be the first one that I'll lose money on. In 10 years that I've been doing it. But commercial, we've been, we've been very fortunate. You know, there's definitely, cause we have a decent amount of office, you definitely see some shakiness in the market. And we'll see, ask me that question in two years. But as of now, no, things have been really good. I mean, to the point, it allowed me to step away from a good healthcare job, you know? But I keep my foot in that door just in case.
Yeah, I totally understand. Why wouldn't you, you know? So you gotta, I think multiple lanes of revenue is always a good thing, right? And so you don't want to only survive on one. Usually that's when it's the hardest, right? No, that's, and was there anything before you started doing this, then you've got into it? What was probably the hardest learning curve for you when it came to the real estate side of things?
To real estate? As far as personally investing or the brokerage side?
I would say the brokerage side.
Yeah, that's been a big learning curve, truthfully. You know, it's funny, when I, when I left healthcare, it's like, yeah, I'm gonna go out, do my own thing and yadda, be my own boss and blah, blah, blah. And you know, you start to get employees and you quickly realize that you work for your employees. And then you obviously have, you know, you're dealing with clients and obviously you work for your clients. So the biggest learning curve is realizing that, I mean, it's also been an adjustment from when I was in healthcare, when you leave the hospital, you're done. When you're your own business, you know, when you're your own, um, when you're running a, a company or you're trying to run a company, I mean, your mind's always on it. My mind's never not on it. So it's definitely been adjusting to make sure, you know, that you free up your mind, you give yourself a mental break. Dealing with employees from that side, um, and having that realization of you're always, you're always answering to someone. Yeah, that, that's been a big adjustment.
Oh, that makes sense. And you bringing up the side where your mind is always kind of on it, right?
Always.
And like we were telling you before, me and Shannon and my father started this business, the promotional products thing. And that's kind of what's been on my mind is that, you know, whenever I get off work, it's either the podcast for that. And, and also as you were saying, you know, no one else is gonna do the work for you. You have to do it.
Good to hear you say that, especially at your age, because that's, some people never realize that. No one's gonna do it for you. Yeah. So it's 20, I mean, and you're 26. Yeah. No, uh, I respect you for saying that comment and it's, you know, especially in your age right now too, it should always be on your mind, right? Y'all are trying to grow something. I'm 39 now. And your, your dynamic starts to shift a little bit, your perspective on what's important, what's not. But I'm glad you're, you're grinding on it. It's a good thing.
Oh yeah. When it, when it comes to, it's also just my personality, I'm not, as we were talking about before the pod, I don't sit behind the desk. I'm up and moving, grooving, doing something, you know, before you got here, I was doing dishes and cleaning the house, you know, just doing all that. But, uh, for me, I've worked since I was 15 years old. You know, my very first job ever was selling Christmas trees on the side of the road to make, make a couple of extra bucks. And then worked at, I was telling you, I met her at Five Guys, worked at Five Guys from 16 to about 20. Bunch of restaurant jobs and then trade work, you know, the, the trade side of things I've enjoyed because it's something physical, I'm moving, that's a big thing for me. I was a little bit heavier in high school. I was like 230, 240 pounds at 6'5". And that was all belly, you know, that wasn't like me being muscular. And then, you know, just finding something that helps work the mind, right? I was telling you about like the depression side of things. I've talked about it a million times on the podcast, everybody that listens to it knows about it. But, um, I've always found physical exercise or just movement has helped keep me just in a little better place, just centered on things. You know, whenever you, I feel like what really a lot of anxiety is, is just not getting that energy out, not going out there and doing things. You played soccer, right? So after playing a soccer game, right? You're probably just like, you know, just everything kind of goes quiet. It was the same for me when I played basketball. I was big into that. I, I thought like after I would get done with the game, I would go home and I could just sit there and not have a streamlined of thoughts going through my head. It actually just quiet things down for a moment.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
But back to the grinding thing, you know, it's just, I don't know, I've, I have goals, obviously I'm married to Shannon here, right? I want to make sure I can be a part of giving her the best life that she can have. And you know, she works her tail off doing the same thing. Yeah. And we're talking about having kids here soon, you know? Kids as well here in the next couple of years after we get the house and stuff. So you know, I just, I have goals. I've always wanted to be a younger parent and, uh, just keep on pushing and seeing where life can take us.
Good on you. You got, you got your path and you're, you're going after it. I respect that.
Yeah. Trying my best, you know, and just getting involved, getting involved as much as possible, uh, through doing the podcast. If I never started this, would've never met you, I would say we were talking about Vic, I would never probably met him or a bunch of people who we've had on the show. So it's just something I've enjoyed doing and, you know, grinding this as the, you're talking about the consistency side of things.
Yeah, you've been doing it for three years. That's impressive.
Yeah. Well, when it comes to the podcast things, we have, um, there's a group here in Jacksonville called Jack's Podcasts United, shouts to the JPU. It's, uh, all the podcasters in Jacksonville get up once, uh, get together once a quarter and we do like workshops where, you know, how do you edit your podcast? How do you do your video work or sponsorships? You know, a lot of people don't want to talk about it like, oh no, I'm not about the money and everything. And then behind the scenes are like, oh, I hope I make a million dollars off of this. We're big on, you know, bringing all that up, upfront, because you know, we're lucky enough to be sponsored by BetterHelp. I don't know if you've ever heard of them, they're a, um, teletherapy. So instead of having to go to office, you can just do it over the phone or video stuff. And, um, yeah, it's just, meeting people has always juiced me up. You know, every time I sit down and I get home from work and I'm like, oh, I got a podcast today, it makes me excited.
That's awesome.
That's, that's the main thing.
Yeah. And we're getting out in our community more, getting to know more of the people who work here, who live here, who are doing good things for the community, trying to grow it up. So we love that part of it. And again, bringing up JPU, like there's so many different niches that you get into in that, but it's everyone just coming together, trying to help promote Jacksonville, pretty much.
Yeah. I've learned a lot more about my community than, uh, before I started doing this, you know? Like all the different boroughs of people in here, um, like the food side of things. That was a big thing for me is learning all the different kinds of, uh, cultures that we have here. I think we have one of the highest populations of Filipino in like the United States almost. There was someone, I forgot who told me that, it was on an episode in the past. And then, you know, so now with Vic, right? Getting to learn about the police, you know, that was a big thing for a while with Jacksonville is a lot, that was kind of a stain. A lot of people were not happy with the police side of things. And now we got TK Waters in here, coming in here, cutting down our murder rate by 50%.
He's crushing.
Yeah. Vic out there, you know, fighting the good fight of changing the perception of the police where people are not angry when they show up. They should be, you know, thankful kind of thing. So it's just, it's been a, just an educational life and getting to meet different people who grew up differently than I did.
Do I see politics in your future?
Uh, I don't know. I'd say I'm, I'm a little PC on the, on the podcast, um, you know, everybody has their own beliefs. I'm sure there are, I'm sure there's people who hear me say things on here, they're like, I strongly disagree with and.
I think you could do city council.
Yeah, I'd be interested, you know, I'm, I'm always interested to help grow the community, help show Jacksonville in a better light and, you know, our home.
That's what our city needs.
Yeah. Say, let me know, put it in the comments. But to get to, oh, go right here.
I was gonna say, you know, keeping with the community side of things, I saw that you have a group called Accountabuddies?
Shout out Accountabuddies.
Try it.
What is that group? What, what's kind of going on with that?
Yeah, that's, um, so there's a group of eight of us, uh, all males. And you know, something you'll see, especially as, you know, you get older, finding a good community, like, you know, you go through high school, college, you're kind of naturally around people. And then you get into the work life and then, you know, you might hang out with some, some people from work, but you, you notice relationships start to drop off. And this is a group of, I've been fortunate, I have a good, I've always had a good, uh, group of friends. But, um, there was, we started, um, started playing spike ball. Someone, someone started up, Kurt Stein started it up. Shout out Kurt, he runs a, a home inspection company here, House Scan. And he started doing spike ball and it started getting a lot of people out there. I mean, there'd be on a Sunday, there'd be like 20, 30 people out there. And some of us started to, um, hang out outside of the spike ball. And, cause we, we all had similar, we were entrepreneurial, we enjoyed, you know, athletic stuff and we were real estate investors. And we, we did a trip and to the Keys, to a friend's house. And we ended up starting this group and it's, it's really grown into something that is really a highlight. It's been four years now. And, um, so it's a group of guys that are, you know, the, the premise is holding each other accountable, right? We get together, we talk about, um, we meet quarterly and once a year we do, uh, a getaway, like we travel somewhere.
That's cool.
Uh huh. And then we have, I mean, there's a lot, there's more involvement throughout the month, but the, the set things are the quarterly meetups. And the goal is to hold each other accountable on the certain things that we set as our, um, goals, our peers, right? You get together and talk about our pillars is what I should have said, but like, you know, if you're religious, your faith, your family, your friends, your, you know, whatever else, business, those are all the talking points. And it's been a place where, um, you know, we, uh, a group of guys have really been transparent and vulnerable with each other. And that vulnerability has created deep forming relationships. And you know, you're around a group of guys that you know, only have your best interests in heart. So you're allowed, it allows you to open up and be vulnerable. And, um, they're all like cool people that you want to hang out with. So these people that I've known, you know, some of them five or six years only, I've become better friends with than people that have been in my life since I was a kid.
That's amazing.
Yeah, no, so it's, it's a really cool thing and, uh, I, I'm really appreciative to be a part of that group.
That's really cool.
Yeah.
Sounds like me and my group of friends, right?
Yeah, you guys, I mean, we've gotten into so many things, like we'll go to the beach and play spike ball. We did pickleball for a bit, but they just get together.
Yeah, I have, uh, four buddies, five buddies I've known for going on 20 years now. Was lucky enough to grow up with them here in Jacksonville and we're, we're big on that as well. You know, whether it's, you know, talking about business ideas, right? We have a mixed group. TJ's a firefighter. My buddy Nolan helps with basically get kids into programs who have special needs. Trenton is, uh, what's he go out and do? He does, uh, he basically goes out and marks, thank you, surveying. You know, and, you know, we're the same way. We keep each other accountable. If we see someone's messing up, we're like, what are you doing, bro? Come on. Or if someone's hurting, we're big on talking about it too. You know, it, it may not be all lovey dovey, there may be some harsh love in there, but it's keeping each other accountable. And I think that's what people need and that's what our true friend really is.
People do need that and, uh, you're fortunate to have that. Cause you know, what I get to see, cause a lot more people have found out about this Accountabuddies and a lot of us are out in the community a lot and the biggest thing I get is, oh, we want to be a part of the Accountabuddies or like, that's so cool. You have that because you, you really see with older males, like over the age of 30, like that desire to be a part of something, but not necessarily having that connection. So it's, it's really fortunate that you have that and I feel the same way.
It's hard to make friends as you get a little bit older, right? You know, like life gets in the way, your job, you know, just wanting to spend time, just even with yourself is always a good thing as well. And Shannon was looking through your Instagram, right? Uh, do you, you have a dog, right? A golden retriever?
That's, that's my business partners, but I, I claim them. I don't, I don't, I don't personally own a dog. My significant other has an indoor outdoor cat.
There you go.
That acts like a dog. So I, you know, there's cool cats and there's not cool cats. This is a cool, this is a cool cat. But the golden, so my business partner lived below me. I have a triplex at the beach.
Oh, nice.
And, um, he was living below me. So when he got it, I was there. Meaning I helped raise it for the first year and a half and he recently just moved two streets, three streets over. So I still have visiting rights.
That's really cool. And I want to get into your philanthropy side of things, right? So I know I brought up like best buddies and multiple other ones.
Speech and, uh,
Hearing.
Hearing.
What, what all are you involved with on the, all of those separate sides there?
Yeah. I mean, I've, I have a history of being involved with, uh, you know, uh, you mentioned best buddies and then, um, the cancer organization, um, but American Cancer Society, I drew a blank. But I'm, recently I've been more active. I sit on the board for Jack's Speech and Hearing. I do obviously city council and I'm actually potentially looking at getting on a board at UNF. I'm having that meeting tomorrow, actually. So we'll see if that goes through.
And being a board member on those, on those things, what does that mean? What do you do say for the, uh, the charity side of things? Like what does a board member do?
So I mean, there's a financial component, right? Not only personally donating, but also helping bring people into that organization that are going to contribute. You, the goal is, so Jack's Speech and Hearing, uh, the goal of the board is to grow the mission and grow the business, right? From a, you know, they have a CEO a day to day, um, but from a multiple person coming together, taking a 30,000, uh, viewpoint and helping guide this company to impact as many people as possible. So you know, we have on, you, you sit on this board, but there's committees, really the work's done in the committees. So for example, I chair the, the committee for governance. So, you know, help, uh, elicit people to come in, uh, interview them, help bring them on to the board. Um, and you know, based on what, what our needs are at that time, those are the people that are getting introduced into the, into the board. And then, you know, they have fundraising events, we, we're a part of all those things. So there's a big gala every year. It's been going on for, cause Jack's Speech and Hearing has been in Jacksonville for 75 years. Yeah, they just celebrated their 75th anniversary. Yeah. 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 And impacting a lot, a lot of people in the community. It's, it's a really cool organization. So yeah, the board is to, the whole point of the board is in any way, shape or form to promote the business and its mission.
I like that. That's really cool.
What are you looking to do on the board at UNF?
So I, I, good question. So I have enough, I, I feel I have enough bandwidth to get involved with one more kind of full, full, like fully commit myself to one more board. And I was like, well, what, what is meaningful to me? What do I, where do I want to give back? Where do I want to allocate my time? And you know, when I reflected, I saw UNF, um, obviously played a large role in my development, right? I got my bachelor's, master's, doctorate from there. So I started putting out my feelers, uh, to my connect, some connections. I got my bachelor's, master's, doctorate from there. So I started putting out my feelers uh to my connect, some connections. To see what boards I could even be a part of. Um, so I was introduced, um, so. The answer is I don't exactly have that answer, but I'm meeting with three different boards to see, A, if it's an appropriate fit from both sides.
Of course.
But I definitely want to be involved with the university is what I've determined, the specifics.
Figuring it out.
That's great.
I mean, UNF is a broad range of things. You know, there's all kinds of things going on there, so.
Well, it'd be in the healthcare, it will be like some healthcare related.
Gotcha.
It's not just, I'm not gonna be on the business board.
I understand.
Yeah.
Something you have some knowledge and.
Yeah.
Experience.
So it'd be like alumni or involved with the, the, the nursing board or involved with the dean's council. The dean is uh, the dean of the health of uh, the College of Brooks Health. So it'll be like one of those three.
That's amazing. And the alumni thing's huge. Like I was telling you, my buddy Nolan that uh works with the kids that get into placement, whether they have special needs or learning disabilities and everything. He was able to get that job from the alumni uh, uh, like group there. They basically like, hey, there's these kinds of openings. You can go intern at these places. And maybe if they like you, you get a job there. And that's a huge step up for a lot, for a lot of people who don't have that program there. It's hard to, you know, you get your degree and you're like, okay, I gotta go find a job now. Who's gonna take me? Because it's not as easy nowadays. There's, it's very competitive, especially I'm sure in that medical field. I know it's competitive. There's millions of people going for that specific role right there. Um, and we've talked about everything that you do during the day, you know, your work, all that kind of stuff. What do you do in your free time? Where do you, what are you interested in outside of that? Are you interested in sports? Are you more of a guy who likes to, you know, if you do have the time to take a breath, relax? What's kind of your pastime?
Yeah, um, a lot of things. Uh, so I live at the beach, right? And at the beach, there's always something going on. I uh, I'm fortunate to have a sauna and a cold plunge in my backyard.
Hey, there you go.
Um, so a lot of, and I'm, I live in a, a, a location that's a couple of streets over from uh, the town center. So like think Pete, Sliders, all that. So a lot of people are always stopping by my house. It's a, it's a very open inviting environment. Um, you know, I have a triplex below me is a good friend and the back is a good friend who's a world champion surfer.
Oh, that's cool. Okay.
He's, yeah, so people are coming through. We're either jumping in the sauna, which uh lends itself to good conversations with friends. Um, we're going out to the beach. I mean, yesterday, every Monday, uh, same guy Kurt Stein puts together a workout on the beach. He's a Spikeball guy.
Nice.
That um, so yesterday I did that golf cart around, going out, checking out restaurants. I mean, I, I make a travel, going to uh Ireland and Rome next month.
Oh, that's awesome. My sister's going to Ireland this July as well.
I love Ireland. I have, I did study abroad there and I have some good friends over there. It's probably one of my favorite countries.
I can't wait to go. I'm half Irish, so I gotta go at some point.
You, you should. It's a beautiful country with awesome people.
Get some tips from you.
I don't know what I am. I'm probably a mutt. I would say I'm something.
You haven't done the twenty-three and me yet?
Mm-mm, not yet. I should. I, I would like to learn from, I've always heard like German around that, you know, that side of things. I'd be interested to see. See where I get my height from, you know, maybe I'm like Scandinavian or Nordic or something, one of the Vikings.
For sure.
But the, the hot ta, or excuse me, the uh cold plunge and the sauna and everything, I've heard nothing but great things for recovery, obviously like the heat shock proteins, all that kind of good stuff. I'm a Joe Rogan fan, so obviously, you know, he praises all that. So it's cool that you have all that in your backyard. And you seem very fit. Is physical fitness a big part of your life?
I go to the gym. Um, I do go to the gym. Um, my diet sucks. So, so, yeah, so I could improve that. I shouldn't say it sucks. It's, it can be improved. Um, but yes, I enjoy, uh, like you mentioned earlier in the podcast, right? Like physically being active helps mental, uh, mental clarity. So I, I do put high, um, uh, a high, what am I trying to say?
Value importance.
There you go.
Yeah.
High value on being physically active.
Understandable. And that's, that's really cool. And so I have two final questions for it. Do you have any, any other questions, Shannon?
I do not.
Okay. So obviously with the wide range of things we've talked about, whether it's in business or going into the medical field, all that kind of stuff, or even in real estate. What would be one piece of advice for someone that's going into the real estate world or the medical field or anything like that?
Um, I would say, good question. What's one piece of advice? I would just say if, if you're gonna do something, if you, if you truly want to do something and you're setting your sights on it, stay consistent. I see a lot of people, um, even like a lot of adults, not, not even talking about younger, younger adults, but that. They do something and then they switch it up three months later. And then they do something and they switch it up six months later. And it's like. The, that consistency will lead to other things opening up. You know, you don't have to know. Um, you don't have to have everything planned out to a T. Just set in action and go on that journey. And you don't know what that journey will lead to, so just commit to the journey.
I like that. And I, I find that to be a very true statement. Obviously, we were talking about consistency earlier with us doing the podcast for so long. I always tell people, it's like, just start. Because I feel like a lot of people get paralysis by analysis. The what ifs, the what happens if this doesn't work or any of that. And I'm always like, you don't know what's gonna happen unless you start, right? You never know one person you may meet. Or maybe you, you know, you do one thing correct and it opens up a million other doors that you were never prepared for. So I thoroughly agree with that.
Yeah, no, I, I remember like growing up, I had um, because I was never the smartest guy, but I, I had smart friends around me. And I remember two, two of them stick out in my mind that were close friends that were very intelligent. And they ended up not pursuing anything and not doing anything with their life. And it always kind of um upset me because it's like you have all the means in the world to do something and you just wasted it. And you just didn't do anything. So what a waste of talent, what a waste of, of effort. And then I have a friend, like I have a good friend that he just does. He, he's not the smartest crown and he's not the brightest crown in the box, but he just does. And he has built um, an impressive business and gone on to impact a lot of people. So there's a lot to be said for just doing something.
I agree with you. And I'm sure with what you just said there, there's a lot of people with that potential right there. I'm sure everybody watching, listening knows that person, right? Someone that you thought, oh, maybe in high school, like, oh, this guy's gonna be a millionaire or he's gonna start a, you know, more, a Fortune five hundred company. And then you see ten, twenty years down the line, you're like, what happened?
Yeah.
You know, so I think that's a very true statement. And then I have my final question. So anytime someone's new on the podcast, it's their first time, I always ask this question. And it is, do you feel successful? And if you do or do not, in what ways?
Do I feel successful? So I'm gonna reiterate their question, so I answer it. Do I feel successful? And if I do, why? And if I do not, why not?
Yes, sir.
Um, wow, getting deep here.
That's why I always ask that question.
Yeah, so can it be a yes slash no?
Of course.
Yeah, like, you know, I'm not gonna say I'm not successful. Um, because I do feel accomplished, but I feel like there's so much more to accomplish. That if my journey ended here, my answer would be no, I don't feel successful. Um, yeah, there's, there's so much more I want to go on to, so much more I want to be involved with. Um, so if, if I. I, I don't like to be negative or down on oneself. And I do, I, I am continuously accused of not stopping to smell the roses. Um, so when I, you know, when I do reflect, I am appreciative of my life and I, in order to be appreciative of it, I have to feel successful. But there's so much more I, I need to go on. I feel I want to go on and accomplish. So yes slash no.
Yeah, and that's the reason why I asked that question is because no one has ever given me the same answer.
Yeah.
Everybody answers it differently. And I think it's very common, right? The whole part where the job's not done. I think that's the main thing, especially as being guys, right? We're always kind of moving, moving, moving. And the, the whole part where you brought up the stopping to smell the roses, I'm the exact same way. You know, I could have, whether I got promoted at work or I, you know, got a really big podcast guest. I'm always like, what's next? And she'll have to remind me, my family will have to remind me like, hey, that's huge. Take a breath. You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I agree. Um, yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah. And there also is a thing to be said to not just sit there and, you know, over enjoy the success.
Yeah.
You always want to have that hunger that drives, that carrot in front of you that keeps you going. So, and I think that's a beautiful way to answer that question. Because some people talk about money, some people talk about having great relationships with their friends or families, all that kind of stuff. And that's why I always ask that question because it's interesting to see what's important to people.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Shannon, do you have anything final to say?
I think this was a great podcast. You are definitely a busy man, but you know, nothing but well wishes in all your future endeavors. And we'll definitely have to catch up again.
For sure. I appreciate it. I appreciate you guys having me on. It's been awesome.
It was a pleasure getting to meet you. And like I said, thank you so much for taking the time out of your day to come sit down with us today and you know, tell your story and tell us more about your businesses and everything that you've done in your life. It's an open invite. If you ever have something you want to talk about or you know, maybe make it a yearly thing, see how things progressing over time, be more than happy. It's an open invite to you.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate that.
No problem at all. And before we get out of here today, if you want to let everybody know where they can check out, you know, the website, all that good stuff for the brokerage, any of that good stuff.
Yeah, um, and you'll add the hashtags, but essentially it's Bolt City Commercial Real Estate. It's the brokerage. We're just growing. We do uh, commercial real estate and property management. So if you have any questions, anything real estate related, honestly, feel free to reach out. Um, and I'll put the link in your bio.
Sounds good. So guys, make sure you guys go check him out. Make sure you guys, obviously all his social media stuff, the website, everything will be in the description. Obviously, if you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out to him or if you guys reach out to me, I will definitely send you his way. But like I said, thank you so much again for your time today. It was very interesting, uh, eye-opening to see all the things you're doing in the community. And we appreciate the work that you're doing in our community to make, make it better.
Appreciate you guys.
Of course. But before we get out of here today, y'all, make sure you guys give us a follow on the social medias. It's gonna be at WhoAreYouPod from everything from Instagram, TikTok, Twitter, Facebook, all the normal spots. And also make sure you guys check out the YouTube channel. You know, we've been doing YouTube for about a year now, so we're very thankful for everybody who's checking out our video content, everything that we see. And if you guys have any comments or any ideas that you like, would like to see on the channel, make sure you guys leave a comment. Let us know what's going on. It's gonna be WhoAreYou? Podcast on there. And then my final thing is if you feel like you'd be a good fit for the show, you're an artist, an entrepreneur, uh, an athlete, comedian, really a mix of anything. And you feel like you'd be a good fit for the show, either hit me up in the DMs or shoot me an email. It's gonna be WhoAreYouPod@yahoo.com. And maybe we'll have you guys on a future episode. But as I say every single week, y'all, thank you so much for checking us out and we will see you guys next week.
Bye.